Please continue during this COVID-19 outbreak to wash your hands. Do everything the CDC is telling you. Look, people, man, this thing is real out here. And um, ain't no faking the funk on that. Now, I think everybody know uh pretty much who my guest is tonight. Um, I didn't, I didn't put it out there as, as much as I could. Um, I'm joined today with Reverend Lou Timothy May. He is a district three county commissioner candidate. And um, to give you a, a brief background, um, first off, if I know that my live tonight, it's probably gonna reach past my friends list. Um, and the reason is because of who I have on there today. Now, a little bit about me, my name is Jermaine J. Williams and um, I am an activist, have been for a long time. And I have been a strict like critic of, of the May camp. And uh, my guest today, Lou Timothy, was no exception. And I reached out to a mutual friend, like if you don't know me and uh Tim, Reverend May have been knowing each other as his whole family. I mean, we've been knowing each other since we were kids, single-digit kids, in a nine, eight, seven years old. So um, when I reached out to him, I told him, I told the mutual friend, like, look, I want to bring Tim on. I want to bring him on because, you know, I have been like a sweeping critic of his along with his brother. And I feel like, you know, a lot of things I see on my timeline, I think he should earn the right. He has earned the right to come out and say whatever he wanted to say and, you know, address the people. And I, and he took me up on that offer and I'm glad he did. And so now we're here. I want to emphasize in no way is this a endorsement or anything like that. This is a complete uh interview for the people of District Three. I, that is my interest, the people of District Three, my grandmama live in District Three, my people, all my people. So I want y'all to make an informed decision. Now, as I say that, to any candidate, I don't care who you are, you can be, this even go to Lumen. Anybody wants to come on and discuss with me, hopefully, I, I talked to Delarian Wiggins. Um, I talked to a representative um that's close to uh the sheriff race and I'm trying to get, get them on. But right now, we have Lou Timothy May. And without further ado, I'm gonna bring on my guest, Reverend Lou Timothy May. Lou Timothy, I'm glad you was here to join us today. How you doing today?
I am doing well, man. Thank you so much for having me on your show. And I'm just glad to be here, man. You know, as you said, we go way back uh to Morris Court, the area where Ms. Nix got frozen cups across the street. And so we are single-digit uh comrades. So I appreciate, man, your efforts that you've always put out there uh to seek and to put a platform for truth and information. So, man, I applaud you, man. And look, thirty, forty years later, we still out here doing uh what we're doing out there in the community. We just not doing it with frozen cups. So appreciate you having me on.
Oh, man, no problem, no problem. And like I said, man, you know, most people don't know, like, we go way back. But you know, like, you know, we, I, I've been a strict critic, really strict critic, because, you know, first off, the um, the dealings, everything that, that your, your brother were doing. And, you know, you two were side by side and, and I'm not gonna lie and I'm gonna say it now. I hated that I, I had to go at it, but I just didn't agree with the politics of Lumen. And um, you two were like, like, like right there with each other. So I took the two of you as one, you know, and God put a calling on my life like he has done yours, your whole family, and a lot of people that's watching. I have been, some call it an activist, I, I, I don't like to call myself an activist. I like to hold the people in uh political office um accountable. And I know that's what God has called me to do and he'll judge me differently. So it's even crazier, it was almost like when Moses went before Pharaoh, you know, somebody you familiar with and somebody you grew up with, and you have to hold them accountable whether, you know, you like it or not. So first off, is there anything you just wanna get off your chest? Or you just wanna, you know what I'm saying, do you wanna lead off with, with just introducing yourself uh for the people who may not know you because I got a lot of people from this whole state of Florida and throughout the country? So please just a formal introduction in your own words.
A formal introduction, uh as you said it before, man, we uh, I'm, I'm, I grew up here in Pensacola, uh middle school, high school. Uh, I've always uh have a love for our community. I'm Lou Timothy May. Uh, and as you know, man, I graduated right here in Escambia County, just like you did. Uh, been an advocate for our community, um been out there fighting, uh not just now, but in the past for several decades. And, man, I'm just thankful uh that we can grow to this place where we can uh be a champion for the cause of our community. So again, it's uh, I'm, I'm married uh to uh my wife. Matter of fact, uh this month, uh we'll make one year anniversary. I have, we have five children. Yeah, thank you so much. We have five children together. Um, I have, um, and so uh I'm excited, man. It's not a whole lot uh that I want to share now because I know I don't want to be redundant and it'll come out a little later as we continue this dialogue. But let me just say, all of us should stand to be critiqued, especially when you're outside and when you're doing things on the behalf uh for the better good of, of the community. So you are the people that help keep us honest and I believe that uh anybody uh should sit in a place for constructive criticism. So uh the critique, critique that you've ever given me uh has been respectable. Uh, again, like you said, you know, you're trying to hold everybody accountable. It's not about one person or another person, it's about holding us all accountable for our community. So I appreciate that because a lot of people don't have the guts because it's not popular to take the role that you take. Uh, it's uneasy at times, but I appreciate it uh because that keeps us balanced, that keeps us uh keeping our purpose, the main focus. And when we get past the polarization and we get back past the emotionalism, at the bottom line, we're trying to get facts, we're trying to get truth, so we can get our people, we can get the community uh on the path that we believe that they can take. So uh in a nutshell, Lou Timothy May, uh and I'm, I'm ready, man, uh for, for, for what you have. Thanks.
Well, thank you, man. And you know, like, a lot of people seeing it now, you know, because um we're in front of like a lot of people online, but that same thing happened with Mayor Hayward. You know, I was so strict of a critic of his, uh he invited me to speak, to sit down and talk to him, no matter how much of a different end of a spectrum. Um, I learned a lot from that, that situation. I was like, wow, you know what I'm saying? I was so critical of him and a person that's the mayor of the city that we live in um sat down and opened his office with me. And, and in return, you know, I was like, let me reach out to Tim because right now, you know, you can imagine what's being said about you. Um, you know, a lot of, you, you haven't had a chance to really come out and answer some things. So we're doing it in front of the people right now. Please comment, um, you have anything? And if Tim, Tim can see the comments, Reverend May can see the comments. And I keep calling you Tim because that's why I've been calling you my whole life. I'm sorry. Reverend May can see the comments and um if he would like to address it, hey, he addressed it. So, look, we're just gonna get right into it. Um, you know, we live in the Bible Belt, you know, Pensacola is the Bible Belt. And, and everything about Pensacola is so biblical. A lot of people are looking at you running against your brother of a case of Cain and Abel. Are you run, or, or, or you like trying to roll, ride his coattail? But I have to ask right off the bat because this is what most people want to know. Why are you running against your brother?
Man, that is a, uh, that's an honest question. It's a fair question. It's an obvious question. Uh, and the truth of the matter is, I'm not running against my brother and uh I'm running for a community and uh running out of conviction, of a compelment that I've had. And you said something uh interesting, you said riding off the coattail of my brother. Uh, let's be clear, I love him, love my entire family, people who knows that I do. I love my entire family, have always gone to the back for my family. Nonetheless, prior to my brother even getting involved in politics, uh, uh, before the current commissioner got involved, I was out there in the community. Um, as you know, uh maybe others don't know, I began pastoring uh here in Pensacola back in two thousand and six. Uh, that's uh been fourteen years ago. And even before that, I began getting involved with the healthcare disparities of our community and uh began to be on the Baptist Hospital Board. I, I was working at Pensacola High School, uh doing outreach to University of West Florida, uh doing voters registration drives. And so uh to ride on someone's coattail, I know that, that could seem like the obvious answer, but that is a long way from the truth. Uh, I've been in the community and you can look at my resume and look at my history and my involvement. Uh, me being involved with the community predates my brother uh being involved with politics. So again, uh, I'm not here to ride on anyone's coattail. I'm here to fight for our community. And I'm trying to do that with character, with conversations, that's why I'm having that one with you tonight, and with collaboration. And so uh I, I just tell you, that is absolutely not the case, that is not the case. Uh, I've never been directly involved. I know you've been a, a critic, you've been a critic of Lumen. And I know uh what you said is you lumped us together, but I've never been directly involved with the current commissioner's politics, uh political dealings nor political agenda. Uh, 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 we are, my, my father, we have ten brothers and sisters, a lot of people don't know that. It's eleven of us, eleven of us, and all of us have charted our own journeys and I'm just one out of the eleven. So I've never had, been directly involved uh with any of his political uh dealings or agenda. So just to clear that out.
Well, um, okay, so as far as your, I know pastoring uh i- is really difficult, you know? Uh, but besides being a pastor, because it takes a lot of compassion and love for people to be a pastor, but what, what, what qualifies you to even sit in a seat? Because one thing I could say about Lumen, uh no matter, you ask who, depending on who you ask, it's what kind of, it's gonna, you're gonna get a different answer. Uh, Lumen, that name sparks different emotion. I tell you, when you, with me being a spark, a, a harsh critic of his, people who love me has cussed me out, you know, like, people love Lumen, you know, and, and like, let me tell you, I'm a, I've been a harsh critic of Lumen. But at one point in time in my life, as a younger teen, I have seen Lumen go down to uh the, the city council. I have seen him fight, um, but somewhere along the lines, um, I think that got lost in, in the shuffle with him. But re- regardless, he has the qualification. What's yours?
Well, the perception, uh, um, uh, Mr. Williams, Jermaine, is that my engagement in the current commissioner race uh just came out of the blue, or that it's new, or, or that it's um, um, just something against the current commissioner. If you remember back in two thousand and eight, there was a souls to the polls initiative to get voters out. Uh, that was something that I, along with others, but I initiated that effort uh to bring out a community to get us out to vote because of the lower voter turnout and lower voter informed voters. Uh, also, when you look back at Brownsville Middle School, everybody know that was a campus of twenties acres and that, that school sat there for years, dilapidated. I fought with the school board with an initiative to try to re-divi- revitalize that entire community by getting that campus. I fought unsuccessfully for that campus, but I fought back in two thousand and nine, that's over eleven years ago. Uh, also, uh, there was a Health and Hope Clinic that I fought for and we got it on Blunt Street for those who are, are underinsured and uninsured. And I fought for that right there in the Morris Court, Addis Court uh area. Uh, I've also uh hosted career fairs and uh the Step Up For Students program. There's a school called AA Dixon, which historically, we know AA Dixon is near and dear to our parents, our grandparents. Well, that school was closed, uh but we went back and reopened that school and we fought for that school, even at a time when the school district had deemed to close it. But we can celebrate this past year, ten years, that's a school that I founded and it's there, right there in the heart of Morris Court. So you say, what, what qualifies, what qualifies me? Uh, number one, I have a heart for the community. Uh, I have a heart for the community. I've been on several boards, governmental boards, appointed boards, and none of those boards were paid boards. I didn't get one dime for any of those boards. These are volunteer boards and you know about going to these boards meetings. You have to spend hours and hours of information, uh making sure you're prepared to either vote on something or to have an understanding on something. And so I've been on a numerous of boards uh from Baptist Hospital Board. Uh, I was appointed to that board, the University of West Florida Board. I was appointed by Governor Rick Scott. I was also part of a faith-based initiative appointed uh by uh Governor Charlie Crist. I also sat on uh the U, UWF Board, the Pensacola State College Board. These are not just boards you choose to be on, these are boards that you're appointed to. And back in two thousand and eight, uh our dear uh, uh, Marie Young, County Commissioner, uh Marie Young, appointed me at the pleasure of the county commissioners to serve on the Board of Adjustments. And this is one of those boards, along with the Planning Board and other boards. Uh, these are powerful boards where people are making decisions uh on how things are gonna go throughout the entire county. So I have board experience, I've dealt with government and not only have I done it, I've done it in a way that brought integrity and character, not only to our community, but also on the boards by which I serve. Because when you serve on one board and another board, people start finding out who are, who's qualified. And so my qualifications, and if you want to look at education, which you and, you know, I hardly ever talk about my education credentials because sometimes to me, that really don't matter because some people say education and degrees to flatter people, but I don't utilize that. But just for the people to understand, I have several degrees. I graduated with my AA degree uh from, from Concordia College in Selma, Alabama. Then I also, I went to school in Tulsa, Oklahoma at the Oral Roberts University. Then I graduated with my BA from the University of West Florida. And then I went over to uh Morehouse School of Religion in Atlanta and I graduated with honors, with my Masters of Divinity. And while I was there at University of West Florida, I was a work-study student. Not only was I a work-study student, I ended up becoming a, a staff member of, of the University of West Florida. Then I became a director, assistant director of what they call the Student Support Services, Student Support Services. This is a program that's designed for low-income students of disability and first-generation of students. So even when I worked at University of West Florida, I was giving to those who needed it the most. And then not only that, I ended up becoming an adjunct instructor at the University of West Florida. Then I became a trustee at the University of West Florida. So when you ask those qualifications, when you look at experience, my qualifications are there. If you want to look at education, my qualifications are there. But then when you look at the resume of what has taken place in this county, in this area, uh, it's there. And no ma- no matter if somebody is hurting, whether it's someone is getting uh, uh, going through the court system, I've been there for families and community, whether someone is dealing with crime, whether they're dealing with the death of untimely loved one, whether it's down there fighting with the sheriff's office, I've been there. As a matter of fact, people really don't know this, I've actually done ride-bys with the sheriff department because I wanted to see how they were treating individuals uh when they were going out into the public. I, I rode out in several areas to try to hold the sheriff's office accountable. They call them ride-alongs. And so when you look at the credentials, when you look at uh what qualifies you, uh, the, the, the point of the matter is, I'm overqualified. Uh, what qualifies me is that, like you, when you have a heart and you have the will to go fight on the behalf of your community, that qualifies you. But to add to that, seven hundred petitions that were received within two to three weeks from people within this community. Uh, people don't understand what that means, when you get seven hundred petitions. That means seven hundred people signed and put their name who believe and desire a change for community. That's, that's, that's where you get your qualifications because none of us can operate in any seat on the behalf of a community without getting the support from that community. So those are some of the things that qualify uh me to run for this office.
Now, you said so much and I, I, I want to touch on something, but before I do, I seen a comment. Um, if you're on the watch party and you commenting on the watch party, I can't see the comments, but I want y'all to be a part of the conversation. Click the actual live, leave your comments, we're watching them. We're gonna get to those. Uh, on the second, I see Delarian Wiggins, who's also a candidate, asks a question. I see uh Haley Morsett, I'm gonna get to y'all, William, I got you, but I want to-
I can't see the question.
You can't, you can't see, I, I-
I can't, I can't see.
Okay, I'll read them out for you. But before we do that, I want to focus on one thing you said in your list of qualifications because it's pertaining to the office you're running for. And, you know, if we're gonna dissect you as a candidate, let's, let's really dissect it.
Yeah.
The Board of Adjustments, explain what that is.
Board of Adjustments, uh plainly put, there are different uh issues that happen in, in neighborhoods all over the county where there's building projects, where uh someone uh like you or myself want to build a home or there's an issue with our land, uh where our neighbors putting a fence near our property line or someone want to build a building this size, or this type of building, or want to build a, build a business inside of a neighborhood. And you have what they call the Land Development Code that dictates what goes on, on your property, whether it's commercial, whether it's residential, uh whether it's uh, you can put multiple uh, uh, uh families. And so this board is a very important board because uh in, when there's an issue, uh, it doesn't go directly to the county commissioner, it come before the board. And this board, from, from, from Century all the way downtown, we have to, we had to disclose and we had to look at every application for any project that was going on in the county, especially if there was an issue like a variance or a conditional use. Uh, sometimes people wonder, how did they get this in their yard and I didn't get it in my yard? Well, they applied for a conditional use. And when you apply for a conditional use, you bring that to the Board of Adjustments. And we have the task of seeing, is this going to go in concert with that neighborhood? What is it gonna do to that neighborhood? Is it gonna bring the value up or is it gonna that, bring the value down? And we have to make uh difficult decisions, whether it's in Perdido Key, uh whether it's uh in the north end of the county, south end of the county. And so many other issues like that come before the Board of Adjustments because we're adjusting things. It's just like the Planning Board and other boards that are very, very critical to the things that are going on in everyday life of the citizens that we really don't know about and don't understand. But these are the boards that we have to have proper representation. And Marie Young, back in two thousand and eight, she gave, she, she appointed me and I served, uh, I served on that board for nearly five years uh fighting for, for, for causes on the Board of Adjustments.
Now, let me ask you this, how many people sit on that board?
Uh, on that jo- board at the time, there's a representative from each district. So each commissioner, they get to appoint one person that's representative of that particular district. And so uh you get five, and I believe now there's two at-large seats. Uh, I think the seat may come from uh the school board and may come from another area, but there's five specific seats that come from each of the county commissioners. And not only that board, there's several other boards, uh SRI, uh, the Santa Rosa Island Authority. Uh, that's the same type of board, or the Planning Board, all these boards, the county commissioners, they get to select who they want to sit on those boards, who would, they would think best serve the interests of the community.
Well, I, I, the reason, and it's so crazy that you, you know, brought that up because we, we haven't really spoken like that. And um, I, I asked that because even though I'm in, I'm in Jacksonville, Florida, I will always keep an eye out and keep my hand on the heart of the city. I see there was a recent shakeup in the, in the Board of Adjustments. And I saw where someone was um replaced and he was a minority. And he was replaced by um, with somebody like, let's say, he was white. So it kind of bothered me with the shakeup and I, I, I got his name, I, I'm gonna have to look at it, but we'll get back to that. Uh, we'll circle back around, now unless you want to touch on that.
We, we can circle back around it, um, once, once you get to it. But I will say, no matter who it is, the representation on that board is supposed to be representative of inclusiveness of the entire county. And so uh we'll touch back on that towards the end of the broadcast or later on, but yeah, that is very important.
Don't let me, because it, it, it bothers me because um District Three is supposed to be predominantly black. Um, that's the reason why the, the district was, drew up like that. So we're supposed to have a, a, a say as black people in Pensacola. And that's why District Three is always represented by, by people who look like us. But I saw in a meeting online where Lumen um ushered in, stepped, the, the, the guy, I don't know if he stepped down, I don't know if he got fired, but I saw where Lumen proposed, where the white guy came in and that bothered me, but we'll get back. So let me ask-
What, what?
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry, this is your time.
Okay, well, now, now, now I'm following you. Now I know exactly what you're talking about. You're, you're speaking of the Planning Board, the Planning Board, the Planning and Zoning.
Is that what that was?
Uh, that's what that was, which is a, a very key, a very key. I, I believe the Board of Adjustment uh representative for District Three, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm not wrong, is a guy by the name of Willie Kirkland. Uh, uh, but the Planning Board uh is, is represented by a gentleman by the name of Walker Wilson, if, if I'm, if I, if I'm not mistaken. And you're ac- exactly right. Uh, that was uh a replacement of a gentleman by the name of William Clay, who I know to have been African-American male, uh but he was replaced. And so uh you're exactly right, those boards were meant to have some representation and his replacement was not replaced with another African-American male or female. Uh, and so on that board now, uh you have no uh representation of diversity, to my understanding, uh for District Three uh or the entire county, which is um, uh really, really uh puzzling, uh which uh, uh, you're right. So uh what you, what you discovered way in Jacksonville is not, is not wrong. I mean, because all you have to do is go online and you can see it very clear.
Yeah, I, I want to encourage everybody, everybody who's watching, watch, I mean, even if you don't watch all these meetings, they're online, um, they sneak stuff in all the time. I, I used to go down there all the time at the city and the county. Um, you got, you gotta go, you gotta learn what they doing because new stuff pop up like, um, we're gonna get to all this. Let me, let me get to these questions for-
And, 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 and it, and it's important that people know that those are appointments. These are not, these are not positions that these people just can have randomly. They have to have the appointing and the endorsement of whoever is their current county commissioner. No one else has a say in that.
Now, now, because Wes, Wes Walker, if I'm not mistaken, didn't he ru- didn't he run in District Three for something? Um, like a, a school board or, 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 or was it?
Well, some years ago, you, you, some years ago, uh if, if, for those who are watching, there's a woman by the name of Laura Etler. Uh, she is the current school board representative for District Three. Uh, the last time there was a school board race, uh Laura Etler, uh I believe Larry Williams, uh, uh, and there's uh another lady, um, last name Hallmark. Uh, and then there was Walker Wilson who ran uh, uh in that race. Uh, and he ran against uh Laura Etler, who is the current person, African-American woman representing District Three. So uh yes, he ran against her and unsuccessfully, uh he didn't win that race. And I, I really don't even know uh who Walker Wilson is, other than what you can see online. But nonetheless, that is the same individual that's been appointed uh to a seat that historically was represented by African-American.
And if I'm not mistaken, from my understanding, I ain't got a college degree, I do politics pretty well. I understand that this is gonna, that planning board is a luncheon pad. It's almost like commissioner and waiting or politician and waiting, like you're gonna run for something.
Um, but, well, typically, in many instances, but not all, those who have aspirations for politics uh to get their feet wet, they typically uh desire uh to be on board so that they can understand how government works. Uh, they desire to get out there so they can know uh who's what, what pieces are moving, how to understand how uh the, the local legislation is going and operating. And so many times when people are getting on boards and being appointed on boards, many times they have political aspirations, uh, uh, or they have some community aspirations. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh back in two thousand and eight, uh I, I was even asked, would I run for county commissioner back in two thousand and eight and when I was appointed uh to the Board of, of Adjustments? But at the time, and I think I shared with that, I was, I was actually asked to run for the House of Representative against Clay Ford. There was a news article by the Pensacola News Journal uh that Reginald Dogan wrote. And at the time, I was actually selected to run on the behalf of our community by leaders at the time. But at that time, I did not feel uh that I was ready at that time. I wasn't compelled at that time to run at that time for that particular seat at that time. But you're exactly right. Typically, people are put in place strategically at times, not all the time, uh when they have aspirations for a later uh political position. So you're exactly right, Jermaine.
Well, I'm telling you what, and you know, I was holding this question, li- please, um, in the comments, we're gonna get to y'all. I'm seeing those questions pile up, you're not gonna be ignored. We're not gonna let uh Reverend May get away until he answer your questions, that's what he's here for, but since-
Hold on, I, I may not be able to answer everything tonight, Jermaine, but we, we, I will say this, we're gonna continue to have these conversations, man.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask you this, since we on this topic right now and I didn't, I didn't expect for that to go that long, I, that was just something that popped in my mind. Let me go ahead and ask you, um, I did a live not too long ago, when you announced when you was running. Um, and once again, I was critical of both of you and your brother. Um, and like I said, I've been an activist since two thousand and ten. Since two thousand and ten, I've been warning people that uh regentification was on the way to Pensacola and they were, they was, they were gonna, they, if Aragon Court was any example of what they were gonna do, in my opinion, Arros, Aragon Court was something to see what they gonna be getting away with it. They got away with it. I mean, can you imagine a place like Pensacola Village having prime beachfront property? There's no way they was gonna let that go. Now, Morris Court, Addis Court, uh downtown, H Street, um, that is still considered beach- Now Morris Court, Addis Court, uh Downtown, A Street, um, that is still considered beachfront property. It's further up, but it's still considered by some. That is prime uh property, and as you can see, it is, I have never in my life thought that I would see white people on the blocks, Belmont de Villas, on a Friday, Saturday night at eleven, twelve o'clock in the morning. I thought if you would told me that, that back in ninety-six, I would've laughed at you. But here we are. And so you see Hallmark getting knocked down, you see condos, you see condos getting built by Blue Dot. And these are places where that, that, people can't afford to live there that look like us. That, that's, that's our, I, 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 our, our property. That's what we, we've been known historically to be. Now, with that regentification, where if you get in office, are you, first off, are you for or against it? And if you get a shot to get in office, what would you do to stop it or continue with going forward?
Well, listen, Jermaine, we are talking way too late because, uh, as you already know, Aragon is what it is now. Uh, and the tan yard, you can just ride by. What has to happen is, we have to understand that in a community, you have to understand multi-dimensions and multifaceted economics. Have to understand that we need development and we need redevelopment, but we don't need redevelopment at the expense of others who are not able to be part of the developmental process. And so what happens is, when there is gentrification, and the answer to your question is, no, I have nothing to do with any of that that's going on. I believe there has to be more conversation and more safeguards in place for grandmama and granddaddy, who historically had these preserve areas for generation after generation, that is now uh being forced out, not because people are pushing them out with their hands, but when property values are raised and tax, taxes are raised, grandmother that's on a, a fixed income, or granddad on a fixed income, uh indirectly, uh, uh, they're, not indirectly, but directly, their property values are raised because if my home is worth eighty thousand and then there's a four hundred thousand dollar house next to me, behind me, around me, the taxes on all of our property is gonna go high. And although we're saying, we're not pushing people out, but syste- systemically, uh, you're kind of forcing my hand because now I can't afford uh to pay for these property taxes. And so what I believe is, we have not wholeheartedly had the real discussion on say, yes, we wanna develop, because development is, is necessary, but it's not necessary at the expense of telling people who historically lived there that they absolutely have no opportunity. Because when we say it's gonna be affordable housing, affordable housing is only relative to the people that can afford the housing. So when you go into an area, I really believe, that's what we're running on, character, conversation, and collaboration. You must put all the stakeholders at, at, at the table and say, what can we do? What are the some models out there where we can either preserve this area or preserve those who want to stay here? What safeguards can we put where their tax, taxes are not, uh, or we can cap them out where they're not out taxed out of their property? And so those are the things that we have to have those conversations with because you know there are some people that wanted to stay there. There are some people who said, this, this house has been in our family for several generations, but we just can't afford to stay here. So I agree with you, if something is not done, if the conversation, but right now, the conversation's not even being had. People have to deal with what's handed to them after man. And you know how it is, it was like us. We just see one day, it's here, tomorrow, it's gone, and then now we react because we are so reactionary, but we need to have some proactive steps. We gotta have some proactive conversation and talk to the residents and say, how do you feel about this? And then get with those who legislate these things to happen and say, I know we, we need development. We need that for our economy, but how can we protect this group of people who've been here for sixty, eighty, and ninety years? So I totally agree with you.
Well, I'mma tell you what, you know, um, and like I've been saying for years, I'mma say it again. Well, first off, hey, everybody joined in there, we're joined by um District Three candidate Lieutenant May, Reverend Lieutenant May. Um, I'm Jermaine J. Williams. Listen, let me tell you something. Um, they wanna make District Three white. Like, they, they, they knew they made a mistake when they gave us this power of this district. You can see what they're doing by moving all, all of us out and bringing all these condos in where we can't afford to stay in, but the people that can will be there, they will be voting. You can see the shakeup in the planning board, and I'mma tell you what, Morris Court, Addis Court, Lower A Street, you on deck. They trying to move you next. I'm telling you what I know. And if you're not careful, and that's what, and I, that's gonna lead me to my next question. We, to me, we have to have, not just somebody who looks like us, we have to have a pure-hearted person in this election and in this seat. Because if we don't, this is gonna be a crucial four years. These next four years, by whoever it is, maybe you, your brother, or God forbid, a Patel walk in, and he just win the race, whoever wins next will have it set up to where they could do whatever they want to District Three, and we have to have ourselves in there. Are you scared, and this come from, I'm sorry, I lost the comment, I don't know who asked, but are you scared that you and your brother would split the vote, making a way for somebody who definitely don't have our interest just to walk in and do what they want with our district?
I'm, I'm absolutely not afraid of splitting the vote. Uh, I, I am very, very, um, very, very intentional uh of getting information so that people can uh make an intelligent decision, to make a decision that's gonna be for the better of their community. Listen, I'm running on character, conversation, collaboration. I'm running for enlightenment. Uh, I'm running so that people can understand what they've told me, that they have a choice in their own communities. So I'm not afraid, because in any election, spo- uh, votes are split. Uh, whether it's Hillary and Obama, votes are split, but at the end of the day, uh, people will come back together. And so when, when people, that's a fear tactic of, of splitting the vote. Uh, when you look at how many undervotes that they're out there, there's enough people that didn't vote at all to get out and vote and change the whole electorate. And so splitting the vote, uh, and I know uh that that's a common theme, uh, but I'm not afraid of that, because I just really believe, once people really hear the argument, when people really hear what's going on, uh, and I actually think it's healthy uh for our democracy. Because one thing about it, when you run the journey, and I'm just running a journey that's really a journey of everybody else, uh, we just want our voices to be heard, because what has happened, we have societal laryngitis. Our mouths are moving, but our voices are not being heard. I'm just one of many that is exercising that U.S. Constitutional Democratic uh, 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 opportunity to run uh on the behalf of principles, on character, and integrity, and that's why I'm running. And so uh, I don't believe that me alone is gonna split the vote. Uh, this is not the first time that there was a contested uh race in District Three. There was one last time, and the time before, and the time before. And so part of our democracy is not for us to take who's been handed to us, but for us to at least have a choice of who we want and who best align with our philosophy, who best align with the things that are dear to us. And so what it is, it just give people a choice. Everybody that is born in the United States of America, people have fought, bled, and died so that we can just have a choice. And all that I'm presenting is a choice. It's not a choice of anger, it's not a choice uh of demonizing my opponent, uh, cuz I love him. Uh, but this is, this is, this is a choice of principle, it's a choice of philosophies, it's just a choice. And so again, no, I'm not afraid. I know I answered that question the long route, but I'm not afraid of splitting the vote.
Okay, and another question, and I think it's a fair question. I, I got my own question, but I'm seeing these questions pile up. And this is, this live is for the, the people of Pensacola District Three. So I'm gonna ask you, what's your top three issues you wanna tackle if voted in?
Well, we got, we gotta tackle several things, you know, um, uh, what, and I've said this before. There are so many issues that we know about, and there are so many other issues that we don't know about. One, one of the first things that people, uh, uh, they, they want you to make promises when you're going in, and that's very difficult, and most politicians fail because the very promises they make, unless they've carefully studied and understood, they're not able to fulfill those obligations. And then they lose hope in people because they told people they could do something that they cannot do. One of the things we have to do is, we gotta go look at the distribution of resources throughout the entire district. When you go out to Lincoln Park and you go out to Ensley, and you go out to some of these areas that still have dirt roads, and they're still on septic tanks, and they're, uh, and they, they still don't have proper lighting and sidewalks, and don't have resource system. Uh, you really have to go look at the budget, you really have to go look at the budget and look at the disparities of how the funds have been distributed. And that's one of the things that I believe that has to be checks and balances throughout the entire county. They say the squeaky wheel gets the grease, but as an elected official, I, I, I can't expect for somebody who's working two or three jobs to come uh make the wheel squeak. I have a job, I have an obligation, without them squeaking, I gotta go ahead and make the wheels turn. And so I believe that there has to be some transparency, there has to be some combing through the budget and looking at some of those items and some of those agenda items and projects uh that have either been underfunded or not funded, and so that they can be equally distributed throughout the entire district and the entire county. And it seems like, it appears, and, and what I've heard out there in the streets, that District Three has not gotten their full share or their fair share of resources throughout their district, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, it does. Now, you know, I, I did, you said you wanted to know what the people had to say, good or bad? So I gotta go to this one. Um, this is a comment, I'll let you do it as you may. And they, this person said, he is not running elsewhere. Uh, there was a comment earlier asking, um, I, I didn't get to it, I was gonna get to it, but let me say, they wanted to know why you're not running in District One, where you built your house. And this person um tackled back on that and said, he not running elsewhere because for him, this isn't about the community, it's about stirring up strife. And that alone should let you know his true character. You don't go against your family, you're supposed to uplift them. Do you have anything you want to answer back with that with, or?
Well, that, that, that is fair, uh, whoever it is, um, and because one thing about me, I don't run from any conversation, because I believe it's healthy, it's for healthy discourse. And perhaps people really don't understand uh that, that I, my resident, and I've been a lifelong, I, I, born in District Three, I serve now in District Three, multiple properties in District Three, sanctuary in District Three, the people that I serve in District Three. Uh, uh, my daughter attends a school, the only high school in District Three. And so when we talk about, and one of the things I want our people to understand is when we talk, we have to talk from a place of being informed, and I'm glad you have that question, because I'm not stirring strife. Uh, but what I do is, I bat for our community. When I was walking down that aisle with Malcolm Thomas fighting for two hundred children, uh, that was disadvantaged. Nobody said I was stirring strife because there was a benefit for our community. When I, when we're doing the gun buyback from the sheriff, trying to get guns off the street, nobody said I was stirring strife, even though it made the headlines because I was fighting for our community. So anytime someone wants to sinuate that I'm stirring up strife, uh, that is just their commentary, and that's just their observation. But if you look at the history of what I've stood for and the things that I've actually worked to implement for our community, it's not about stirring strife, but it is sometimes, it's inconvenient, it's inconvenient, because everybody is not strong enough and not willing to bat for the community and to speak what other folks won't speak. Will sit around and say how bad things are, but when somebody stands up and said, no matter who it's, it hurts, who it bothers, it's almost like the doctor saying, I know I need to fix your arm, but I gotta break it first so it can get better. And a lot of times, we get so uh, uh, emotional, and we get so polarized by the optics of what it looked like, that some of us will rather sit here and die than go towards a solution that would help us live. And so I say, I appreciate the critique, because you may be feeling like some others, but I can guarantee you that the things that you're assuming are not true. I'm not here to stir up strife, but if you look back two decades at all the initiatives, the Health and Hope Clinic, when you look at me on the Board of Adjustments, when you look at me at Student Support Services, when you look at the Gulf Coast Kids House, those of children that have been battered and neglected, those are boards I sat on voluntarily. I'm not stirring up strife, but when I see a child being abused, it's some things that I gotta stand up and talk against, even if nobody else says it. We already know people and children that get abused, most of the time, they get abused right within their own homes by their uncle, their auntie, their sister, their brother. I am one of those people that when I see injustice, when I see something that can be better, and if I could do something to make that better, I throw myself at the mercy of the community to say, hey, let me try to do the best I can, because I'm not one of those people that like to just assess the problem. It's kinda like what I share uh with those in our leadership, I share with my children. Don't just bring me a problem that we all upset, bring me a solution. So I've always been a part, I'm not just gonna talk about the school district, no, we started a school. I'm not just gonna talk about the healthcare system, no, we, we, we opened up a healthcare clinic. That's just not what I do. I'm not gonna talk about who's not voting, I'm gonna hold a voter's registration. That's what I do. Do we get slack for that? But tell me what leader, tell me what person, individual, that have ever tried to do anything, whether it's to be a husband, or a wife, or child, a, a business owner, that does not encounter conflict when you're trying to move things forward, and particularly a group of people?
If you just joined us, we're with uh Lieutenant, Reverend Lieutenant May, and this is uh District Three candidate, I'm Jermaine J. Williams. In no way, shape, or form, and my, this is an endorsement, this is a sit-down conversation that I'm having with Reverend Lieutenant May. Uh, been a harsh critic for years, but always been uh knowing him for my entire life. All right, another question, and you know, I, I, I'm interested to know your answer in this one as well. Uh, this, she says, I want to know one thing. The current, I want to know one thing the current commissioner has or has not done that you disagree with, and what with that exact situation would you have done differently? And she said, break it all the way down for me.
Well, 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 you mentioned one today, and I'll just stick on this one. Uh, anytime that there, I would have the opportunity to appoint diversity or representation of our community on a board that is as important as Board of Adjustments, Planning Board, uh, Santa Rosa Authority, I will make sure that I would communicate that to our community and get the best qualified candidates to put in uh their, their resumes or their desire. But I will make sure, because I'm in a seat that's supposed to be reflective and to bring diversity within uh the county. I would make sure that that seat is truly a representative, representation of our community. So whether it's, it's Wedgewood, Lincoln Park, Ensley, all of those people would have a say who sits on those board. That's what I would do differently, and thanks for that question.
All right, now, I do wanna back off from the comments, and I, I got a question. Um, it was a hot topic, I never heard from, um, me personally, somebody probably else has. What happened in that traffic stop with, with, with? I, I gotta know, I mean, cuz let me tell you something, you know.
Oh, y'all got me on the hot seat tonight, man, I'm telling you.
I'm sorry.
Let me just tell you this, Jermaine, this is my first uh, uh, online interview, so man, I just, I love you, brother. That's why I'm doing this, I love you. I mean, I've had so many people wanting to get me out on live and interviews, and, 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 and you got me tonight, man, and you hitting hard, you hitting hard.
And listen, I, and listen, there's no way I could've been a critic this long and then came up here and pandered you, I'm sorry. And I think a lot of people was expecting that, you know, they thought we teed up, are we going against Lumen? Now, that's not what it is, this is not an endorsement, he said.
I'm in the hot seat, I'm telling y'all, I'm in the hot seat. And man, Jermaine don't play, man, he ain't cutting no corners, man, I'm, I'm over here sweating bullets.
You can't see that smoke coming from behind you, man, but listen, cuz here's the thing. I was really critical again of you and, uh, and Lumen. But when I saw the way W E A R, P and J, and the seat that was going against y'all, uh, me and my cousin Jabril, we did, I think you told me you stumbled up before we got, as you stumbled up on the video, we, we came right to like the defense, because we don't, I, I don't dislike y'all. You, you, your brother, none of, uh, your whole family, I've been knowing y'all. But it's the, it's the political, but if we're talking about just attacking y'all because y'all are black men in power, and they wanna tear y'all down, now, I'mma, I'mma come to y'all's defense every day for that. Um, but what happened?
That, that, that's a good question, man. Wow, this, this is, you know, and, and the truth of the matter is, people saw what they saw. Uh, but the perception is that me and my brother got pulled over and got stopped, and that is totally inaccurate, no matter how it was spun out there. Uh, nonetheless, at the time that that was going on, I had no idea what was going on. I was literally across the street, I'm glad you asked. I was at a camp uh for inner-city uh, uh, children uh across the street uh that, a camp that I helped start uh almost nine, ten years ago, that is a free, it's a camp of one, one of its kind, where children are eating, uh, they're getting exposed to different, uh, different things like dance and, and educational opportunities. And I was across the street for this week-long camp. I just happened to walk out, as I was walking and leaving outside of the center, I noticed uh, uh, across the street uh that my brother instantly, uh, it seemed like something was going down. And of course, and this is another issue, you know, this is, this shows you how much I love my family, I love my brother. You know, and I noticed something was going uh wrong really quickly. And so I, I, I proceeded across the street, and at the time, no one else was outside, Jermaine, no one else was outside. I noticed that my brother and, 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 and a female uh, uh, officer, uh, they were exchanging some words, I didn't know what to think, all I knew was, I said, this doesn't look good. I, I, I pull my, I pull my phone out, I pull my cell phone out, and I pulled out my camera and my video, and I start videoing uh just so that I can make sure that what was going on, it could be recorded. That was at a time things were going on uh in, in New Jersey, things going on in Chicago. There was a lot of, there was a lot of just uh, uh rifts between law enforcement and community and leaders, and especially those of African-American descent, like black men. It just seemed like uh things were just spinning off. And so I just made sure that what I would, would have done for you, what I would have done for my sisters or anybody, when I see something that appears like it's gonna go awry, I pulled out my phone so that there could be a witness, so that there could be some video, because. Because you know how it is, they'll say if somebody said this, somebody else said that. But I knew the best way to capture this is to pull my phone. There's nobody else outside. Who's gonna believe me? Who's gonna believe my brother? Who's gonna believe what? And so in order to make sure that we had a true account with what was going on, I just pulled my phone out and I got about ten feet off from there and and I and 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 so uh, they they began to, uh, to to lump us in that same situation, but I wasn't pulled over. Uh, I didn't get a citation, didn't have anything to do with me, although they made it about me. Uh, and ultimately what, uh, uh, I got attacked for doing that. But you know what? I want to make sure that my brother was safe. I want to make sure the officer was safe. Because when you put it on video, it shows everybody. It it holds everybody accountable. So that's a good question. Now, I mean, I haven't been asked that question in a long time, but the truth of the matter is, uh, that wasn't, that what, that that wasn't my deal. But anytime something is not going right in the community, I make it my deal. I make it my job to step in, to do whatever I can to help the situation. And that's all I was really trying to do, to make sure that the situation did not escalate any further.
Well, hey, I got my answer. That's what's up. I I was always wondering, but I I'm not close. I wasn't, I'm not close to the camp. So I couldn't figure out what what was going on. Now, I gotta ask you this question. This comes from the comments. I think it's a really great question. And I want to know this myself. Commissioners have turned their back on Brent Park Ballpark and the location. Hold on, I'm sorry, these, uh, these comments pushing it up. Let me bring it back down. Commissioners have turned their back on Brent Park Ballpark and the location and families that could be helped as youth are getting into more trouble with youth sports opportunities on a decline. What will you do to help build and support families in that area that's in need of it?
Well, you know what? That's a good question, man. That is an alarming question because so many, when I've been out on the trail, when I've been out there in different communities, uh, these parks just keep coming up, the football parks, and they've been, uh, uh, people are really upset at the mismanagement, the, uh, the the not enough attention that's going towards certain parks. And I believe that they, all the, all the parks need to be investigated. Uh, they need to be looked at what the resources are now and which parks are getting, uh, the the lion's share of, uh, of the resources and equalize this thing out for the entire county. It can't be one, one park or two parks getting all the resources. So I believe you have to put, uh, uh, really need to put a consortium of leaders out of all these parks and bring them together so that they can have a stake in what goes on in these parks. So you can really hear the issues from what, uh, someone else was in another area and they were sharing, people really don't understand what's going on in our park because they don't even come. You gotta go visit these areas. And just like whoever made this comment, there has to be a liaison that's a representative of all these parks that have a seat at the table and so that they can disclose and discuss what's going on at the parks and what things can we put together to remedy uh, some of the issues that these parks have. Because truth of the matter is during the summertime, during football season, during these other, uh, uh, when students are not in school, the parks are area where they go, uh, where they congregate. And this is a place where you can put positive intervention. And so when they're lacking resources, uh, I can understand whoever that person is. Uh, why, why, why aren't, and we feel like we being neglected? And that's just not the sentiments of one park. Let me tell you, I've talked with people that represent three or four different parks and they're saying the exact same things. And I can guarantee you, I can guarantee you, if I'm elected, we're gonna go in there, we're gonna make sure we do right by all parks.
Well, that's what's up because we need it, man. There's a lot of neighborhoods that feel like they're forgotten, they're neglected. And, um, you know, wow, like, man, I just really feel like Pensacola could be in a much better place if the politicians, city and county, um, could come together and and help out those forgotten places. Now, um, let me see, I I'm seeing a lot of comments and I'm seeing this throughout the comments. So I'm just gonna group this in a whole question. Um, you can answer it or not. Um, as far as running against your brother, uh, what what would you say to a voter that says you running against your brother and they don't respect that and no, and and like you're you're standing alone against your family and they don't respect that? Um, I think I thought it was, you know, a pretty honest question, so I I ask it.
Well, number one, uh, we have to just go ahead and correct. I'm not going against my family and I'm not running against my brother. And this is going to be, uh, I believe something I'll help to vocalize um, um, continuously, you know, just as I stood there to protect, uh, uh, a situation uh, that the current commissioner was in. That's what I'm doing for the community in my role, in my role. And it's and it's been part of my purpose and my call for a long time that I've had to stand in the gap even when it was inconvenient, when it was misunderstood. Uh, I cannot, uh, in my life, part of my life's work is to stand on the side of justice, on to stand on the side of those who are hurting. Uh, it's no coincidence that many times when people, uh, need someone to lean on, we've had several calls there in the Brownsville area where we've helped mothers and fathers have to deal with their son or their daughter being, being, being killed or shot or have to deal with the correction system. And it really didn't matter at that time. They didn't ask me, uh, that 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 my family approved or anybody else. They said there was a need. And when there's a need and I'm able to help that need, I don't have the privilege, I don't have the privilege of getting, uh, 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 of deciding who and when and how I help. When God places it in my heart, and I know it's part of my passion and purpose, that's something that I have to rectify with my conviction. And in my conviction, I cannot, there's a book called Injustice Made Legal by a gentleman by the name of Harold Bennett. It's about the plight of the widow, the stranger and the orphan. And in that book, it talks about those who will speak on the behalf of those who don't have a voice. And so I don't have the opportunity or the pleasure, this, it it, as difficult as it is, because the optics is that I'm running against my family. But the truth of the matter is, I've always been there and I will continue to be there for my family. But this is a broader picture. We have to paint with a broader brush. This is about a community that not only have I been serving for almost two decades that I continue to serve even at this moment. So again, that's what I would tell them. And then I would also say, have a conversation. Look at the reality of why he's running, uh, cuz I'll go anywhere and I'll talk with anyone and look down and after we pull back past the emotional optics of it, let's really see, let's look at the community. Let's not look at, uh, at two brothers or whatever they wanna call it. Let's look at who or what would be in the best interest of our community. Because at the end of the day, it's about the next generation that's gonna come behind us. It's about our grandchildren, those that we will never see. It's about making a decision now. And we cannot forfeit the opportunity to do something now that we can do based on the fact that, hey, he's running against family. It's almost, uh, like, uh, I don't wanna use Serena and Venus, but, uh, nobody says when they both make it to the Wimbledon, uh, that their mom or their dad gonna be upset with them because they made it to the championship round and cuz they're both doing something that they're passionate about. And so nobody's gonna say that Venus and Serena hate each other. They just saying both of them are passionate about things that they, uh, that they've been doing for a while.
Well, you know, I just gotta tell you, um, it take a lot of courage to come and face these questions, these comments, and to face myself knowing that I was such a harsh critic of of you and your brother for a long time. I've got two more questions. I'm gonna let you go cuz I promise I weren't gonna hold you.
But 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 yeah, be- before you say that, you mentioned something earlier, a video that's on YouTube and I and I and I talked to you about this, uh, your boy Jabril, you know, and I have no problems with him. Um, um, and in in that segment that y'all were talking, he said, man, I was a critic of Lieutenant May. I was a critic of Reverend May. I was a critic of of Lumine. He said, I was a critic. He said, but man, I was in an event with Reverend Lieutenant May. I saw him. I seen this man, even when when people in our community didn't see me. He saw me in a room that I, he he, these are his words. He said, he batted for his community. He batted for his community. And those are the things, and that was those, that was years ago. And so I believe that same sentiment that that your your boy and 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 my friend Jabril, he voiced, those are the things that I will continue to do. And that's what I would say. I would say, hey, everybody, everybody, all of the gift, everybody opportunity, not based, not based on their family, not based on, uh, uh, their pet, based on what they stand for now, based on their experience and based on the resume in their track record of things. See, I'm open. I invite people to go do a Google. I I invite people to go downtown. I invite people to go look at the school that we opened up. I invite them to go look at the facilities that we opened. I want, I I invite them, we we give scholarships every year to uh, to Lamp lighter and other groups out there, uh, different initiatives, uh, that we're a part, we give. We we give of ourselves. So that's what I would, that's what I would tell. But again, I just wanted to highlight that because you mentioned that and I re- I remember hearing some of the criticism. But what happens is over time, you can, you can outlive those criticisms. Those criticisms will make you better. The criticism that I've gotten over the past, I can tell you, I embrace them because they make me better. But go ahead with your other questions. You did tell me you weren't gonna hold me this long.
Yeah, and here we are. So I've just got two questions. I'm gonna keep it at that. Um, and and I'm, I I can't say enough how much, uh, respect of mine you've earned by coming on with me knowing that, you know, that I'm a harsh critic of yours has been and then you're facing the fire. So I I can't do nothing but respect that. And whether you like this man or not, like, coming on with me wasn't no easy thing. I mean, like, I ain't no big bad bear or nothing, but you know, I, for about a good eight years, I've been. So.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Now, let me ask you this. Now, this question came from me. Um, somebody wrote me on Facebook one, the day I announced that you was gonna be on there, on here. And I think this is one of the fairest questions that was asked since I've been receiving questions. They say that they are a contractor, a black contractor in the city of Pensacola. When Quint Studer came out and said that, uh, you know, he's gonna be building all this stuff and he was gonna give the minority contractors a shot at building up. Um, but the only contractors they said that they have seen was Ba- uh, uh, May or May Bear, of a company, some company with the May name. Um, so you were lumped into that and they're saying, if you were to get.
I was lumped in that?
I'm just letting you know what the guy said. This, um, you know, cuz it has to be, he has to have this out because he wanted me to ask you, are you gonna let other minorities bid on something that you have a monopoly on?
Well, well, first of all, let 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 me, uh, clear the air that I'm not a part of May's construction, number one. Uh, I have no ownership in that. I have no, uh, authorization on what goes on with May Construction. Uh, uh, so let me just clear that. Uh, num- uh, number two, uh, Diane Mack, who was a city councilperson uh, some years ago, maybe almost ten years ago, she appointed me to the S B Ad Hoc Committee. Uh, this committee was designed to help small business. It's like S B, uh, S B E, uh, Small Business Enterprise. And then later it turned into Small Business and Minority and Women. Uh, my objective has always been to be inclusive and particularly for small businesses. And I believe, uh, that 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 s- small businesses ha- have not been given a fair shake and opportunities. And so, uh, and so what will I do? Of course, I will make a, open up a pipeline by which all small businesses will have an opportunity, not only opportunity, they will have information and a route on how to do business, uh, with the county. Uh, and and so to answer that question, I hope I'm answering that question. So I have nothing to do with May's construction. Uh, uh, I have nothing to do with May Bear. I I mean, you're talking about May Bear Construction, but I I I don't even know who Bear is. Uh, and so, um, but nonetheless, so to answer that person's question, that contractor, yeah, I'm gonna do all that I can and all that I, uh, will do to to make things are fair for all local minority and women, uh, contractors. And and a good thing about that is, you know, people, uh, you ask, uh, I I'm being supported by uh, legitimate contractors, prime contractors and self contractors.
Who are your endorsements? Have you received?
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, I told you before, back in two thousand eight, I I was appointed to the Board of Adjustments by Marie Young, Commissioner Marie Young. Uh, you know, I've worked, uh, I've worked with, uh, uh, Linda Motry, who was the past representative of District Three. Uh, um, I've worked with so many in several different other, but, uh, as I, as I mentioned, that Board of Adjustment, it comprised of five, uh, individuals, two of who, uh, whom, uh, are some of my best and great supporters because they've seen me in action. They've worked with me for four to five years at the Board of County Commissioners. Bob Price, uh, who whose whose father in family business is one of those businesses and you can Google them and go to their Facebook and go to their website that they have a lot of respect in this area and they understand that I have the, I have the capacity, I have the temperance uh, to serve in a capacity of Board of County Commissioners because they've worked and served with me. Uh, then you have, uh, uh, Jason Harvey, uh, who is another business owner of of a medical facility. They both sat on this board with me for several years and these individuals have wholeheartedly supported me and are supporting me even up to this day. And so again, uh, there's, there's many. And again, like I told you, the seven hundred people who've already signed petitions, those are the people, uh, who who are endorsing me and I know they're gonna come. I'm getting phone calls every day. I'm getting emails every day. I'm even getting people from the beach calling. I'm getting people, uh, downtown, uptown, uh, Enslie, uh, Inglewood, you name it, because I really believe that I could bring and we could bring together in a collaborative way, uh, something to the county commissioners that is inclusive and not divisive. Uh, when people look and they say I'm trying to divide, no, I'm not. Actually, I'm one that represent uh, inclusiveness in those who know whether it's faith or non-faith. I I've worked with those of different denominations. I've definitely worked with those of different economic statuses. And so that's, that's a unique thing that I would bring and that we bring together because I don't run from conversation, even if they're tough conversations. I believe that we can never get to a solution if we just have conversation with those who we wanna have conversation with. I have tough conversations with friends and enemies because I believe if we're gonna do the best that we can for our community, I have to sit down at the table of critics as long as I know the criticism is pointing to a larger goal of the community being better. And so again, what's your next question? I'm sorry.
That you're good. You're good. Um, I I wanna say to the people in the comments, um, really quick, uh, I'm not ignoring any co- uh, comments. I see all of them. Um, and I thank you for commenting, but I just wanna let y'all know, I'm a man of integrity. Um, I prayed before I came on this live and I told God I would not disrespect anyone and I'm not gonna do any gossiping or or any. Some things are off limits to me to ask. Now, uh, Lieutenant, uh, is on Facebook. If you wanna ask him directly, you can. Um, I I thank you for tuning in. I thank you for commenting. But I wanna keep this strictly political and I wanna ask questions that I think that are fair. So I'm sorry if you think I'm ignoring your comments. I'm not, but I have a certain integrity that I wanna allow myself to answer some questions. Um, so last question. Um, not even a question, more so I didn't even know until one of my mentors told me, uh, you you were, you almost lost your life, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you touch on that?
Well, well, Jermaine, very, um, uh, and thi- this is really, uh, a touchy, not necessarily just a touchy, but it's a meaningful moment for me. Uh, back in two thousand eighteen, I was, I suffered a car accident that literally, uh, could have easily taken my life, um, which, uh, it was a car accident, uh, without me going in in too many details. Uh, many people didn't know. Uh, all all people knew is that, uh, Lieutenant May, where is he, you know? Uh, we don't see him as active as we normally would see him. Where is he? And other people were, uh, they were actually, didn't know where I was, so they just left it to themselves. But I I suffered a a terrible car accident. Car was totally totaled. Uh, I was pulled out of car, laid out at the scene. Um, um, I ended up in a trauma unit. Uh, I underwent several procedures, doctor's care, uh, uh, I I mean, just so many different things. So I I I was and and even with you not even knowing about it, it's amazing because, you know, you hear about everything else that people speculate about my life. But when something is just as tragic a- as a car accident that literally could have taken my life, many of my friends are saying, man, nobody told us about this. We didn't know you were hospitalized. We didn't know you had to learn how to walk again. We didn't know that you had these surgeries. We didn't know. We didn't know you went through all of that. But yes, I I went through that and and that was a moment where I didn't have a lot of people around my space. I was, I was really wrestling with God and my purpose and continued to thank him for even me being alive, uh, to be a father to my children at the time and to be able to see them again. Because that was a moment where my children could have lost their father and and the church could have lost their pastor and 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 a lot of things could have been very ugly, but God preserved my life. And one of the promises I made unto God while I was rehabilitating because we didn't know exactly how my rehabilitation process was gonna be. I said, God, I'm gonna always do what you lead me to do, even if it's not convenient, even if people don't understand. Because literally, and I can show you some pictures, uh, i- if you see the car and if you see, uh, uh, my medical records, you see what I've gone through, I'm only here by the grace of God. I'm only here as a miracle that God has made. And I and 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 I lean and and people say, who 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 are you depending on? Who you depending on? And I say, I always, but even more so now, I'm depending on God because there is no medical reason, there is no, uh, even a state trooper, uh, that came and visited me. Nobody understood how I survived that car accident. I still don't understand other than by the grace and the mercy of God. And so I, that's why I don't demonize anyone. That's why I don't hate anyone. That's why I'm not going against anyone. But I am trying to fulfill, uh, what my grandmama was saying and my granddaddy are charged to keep. I have. And I'm trying to make sure that I fulfill my purpose. Even, and when you look at Gandhi, you look at Martin Luther King or Malcolm X, none of those individuals could stand for anything without a lot of resentment. And a lot of times the resentment came exactly from those who they were trying to help. And so I understand it. I get it. We we get emotional. Uh, but I, at the end of the day, I want people to test my heart and then look at the outcomes. And at the end of the day, people will know, if you meet this man, this man is gonna treat you with respect. I'm gonna always give you a platform to discuss and disclose your. I'm gonna always give you a platform to discuss and disclose your heart and I'm not gonna disrespect you. I'm not gonna curse you out. I'm not gonna do those things because my character, my character and having conversations with everybody, multi-faith, I've, I've, I've been to Switzerland. I, I've been out of the country in multi-faith, uh, particular environments. Because people have appreciated my ability to sit down and at least have a conversation with people who don't think like me. I don't think, because you think differently than me, then you're deficient. You don't have to be deficient to have a different ideology, no matter what side of the tracks you were, you were raised on. We all are trying to go to a common goal. And so, uh, that's what I would say to those people. And I say to you, and I thank God for those who are watching, who prayed for me, those who understood what I went through. Uh, I may not have seen you, you may not have come to the hospital, but I appreciate you and I thank God for you. And we're just, uh, we're just symbolisms of what can happen. You know, uh, we're symbolism that you can do anything that you put your heart and mind to. But whatever you do, make sure you do it with integrity and honor. For me, I honor God and all that I try to accomplish, uh, I'm faithful, uh, to my family, uh, trying to love my wife with all that I can. Uh, I have two teenagers, God knows, 16 and 17 years old and, and, and they're helping me, uh, to grow in my area of patience. But man, um, I just want to encourage everyone who is watching, I thank you for at least, even your criticism, your critique, your critique. I thank you for that. And most people won't thank people for their critique, but I thank you because it makes me a better man. It makes me a better, uh, community leader. I thank God for every critique. Because you made that critique out of your feeling and some of you made it because you really think that that's the best for our community. So I thank you and I'll take all of those things to heart as I move forward down the road. Thank you so much.
Okay. And real quick, I'm looking in the comments. I really want to say this, uh, Carla Hardiguller, really quick. Can you type what you want to know? She's a county employee. So she really had a question and I want to honor her since she's a, uh, uh, employee of the county. I know you gotta go. Listen, matter of fact.
Tell them we'll come back another day at some time too.
We're trying to make it work. Listen, thank you so much, man.
But, but if, if she, if she's, did she have a question? Did, did it come up?
Nah, we just gonna have to go along because I, I, I told you an hour, I ran over. So I apologize. I thank you so much, man. Thank you for, for coming on. Um,
For sure, man.
Uh, I hope he, I hope he cleared the app for some of y'all. Um, and if not, hey, he's here. He's on Facebook. Y'all can get to this man. He can answer any of your questions, but I thank you so much. Took a lot of courage and everything. Last words. Any last words?
Man, I want to tell you, thank you, sir. I want to thank everyone who will watch this, who watched live for every comment, every concern, uh, throughout the com- community. Uh, I just really believe that our community can be better. Uh, I'm not saying different is deficient and I'm just here to be an open book, to try to lead out of transparency. And I, I believe that for the best of our community. So I appreciate your platform and others. Uh, even with this coronavirus, let me just, uh, send my hearts and prayers out to families. Uh, I have friends that have been impacted, not just in this city, but all over the country. And so I'm praying with leaders. I know someone is in the church, uh, a pastor, uh, had to deal with this. Family members who had to deal with the loss already. So let me just say my prayers are with them. Uh, my prayers are with our community. Uh, my prayers are, are, are with all of us as we wrestle and as we have to re-event and reimagine how we do business, how we communicate. I just believe that, um, better days are, are yet ahead. So thank you again for this night. Thank you for everybody. One looking forward, John, you held me, you held me hostage, man. I, I'm sweating, I'm sweating bullets everywhere. And had, had not you and I been, been playing on the playground in Morris Court and getting frozen, cause man, I probably won the game on your show, man. But nah, but you straight, man. And I appreciate for the respect level that you giving unto me, man. So thanks again.
Hey, all pastor and District Three, all that stuff aside, there's Morris Court for life, man. Hey, thank you so much, man.
Yes, sir.
Y'all for watching, coming. Hey, I'll be back sometime soon. I put so much effort into this interview. I ain't even got nothing lined up for tomorrow, but I'll be back with you real soon. Y'all take care, wash your hands.
Yes, sir.
Do all that, fight this coronavirus. Mr. May, thank you. God be with you.
Take care. Bless you. Bye bye.